Welcome to our September 22 school committee meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Do I have any questions? Any concerns from anyone? No? Okay. All in favor? Okay. Now, for current -- oh, Mr. Eric?
Read your list.
Go ahead.
Middle school yearbook advisor Jay Zarro, I'm sorry, resignations and retirements, Jeff Heath, who is leaving us to take a professorship at Rhode Island College. Appointments, middle school yearbook advisor Jay Zarro, middle school contact teacher Sheri Alves, middle school science four-fifths Melissa O'Neill, middle school athletic director Steve Schreiner, high school contact teacher Matt McGuire, head field hockey coach, one-year-only Chris Messenger, boys JV basketball coach Bryant Cleary, assistant football coach Jorge, I believe it's Peso, I apologize for the pronunciation, elementary part-time librarian Donna Mackhumber, elementary strings Renee Bond, and middle school music Metro Narcisi.
I'd like to thank all these people for stepping up and filling in these positions. And Jeff Heath, I'd like to wish him well. He graduated with my son James. He's amazing. He did so much for this middle school phys ed. Okay, anyone else? No? Correspondence? We have two to distribute. One personnel matter and one from Representative Justin Price. And that's just for correspondence. And now we have new business, discussion possible vote, request for Rides reimbursement. Mr. Eric?
Yes, in order to be considered for the new pool of money that the governor has made available, we met with Dave DeQuatro from RGB Architects, the folks that helped us do the study. And we went through the recommendations from the facility subcommittee, and we placed them into the format that Ride was requesting. And since we were on a timeline, they subsequently gave districts a little more time, but we were under the September 15 deadline. Actually, it was the 15th. So we didn't have time to come before you to go over this. But as you can see, we put in two submissions, and we based the submissions on two things. One, was it what we call an immediate self-health and safety issue, or one or a two? If you recall back to the report, the ones and the twos were the most immediate. And affordability, we decide, or I decided that these recommendations that we put forward, if we had to, we could pay for out of our carry-forward balance that we have, and we talked about that the money's available for that. So, you know, we submitted this plan. We're not, you know, unless we get the funding for it, we're not tied to doing these things. But in order to be considered, we had to submit the proposals. That's what you have in front of you, and there's two proposals for the schools.
And this would qualify us for 40%?
That's correct.
Reimbursement?
Because what happens now is the state, our understanding is the state takes all the applications, and then they review them, and then they base them on, I use parentheses here, quotes, need. So Ride will determine, and we believe these are very important for us, but they're going to be looking at X number of applications, and then they have to determine which ones they feel they should.
The state set aside $20 million, so in order to be eligible to apply for a portion of that, we've got to get these in by the deadline.
So that puts us in the queue?
Yes. There's no guarantee for any reimbursement, or, but at least we can be considered.
What's the difference between priority one and priority three?
Priority one is me, you know, just something that needs to be done right away. Oil pumps.
And that's, but that's how they ask.
That's how they classify these two items.
I gotcha.
They're not our one and twos, but it's how Ride asks.
How they did it. So priority one is more immediate?
Right. If you look through all of these, these would be ones and twos in our report, in our facilities study.
Okay, gotcha. And then threes are the, are be, they would still be twos, but as far as what, how Ride classified them?
Yes. You had to categorize your requests.
Gotcha.
So that's what you, what you see here.
So they're different pots of money for the different priorities, do we know?
It's 20 million for the state.
So, they wanted priority one, priority three, but...
Yeah, for example, Ride could say, okay, Tiverton, you're asking for, you know, 570 or whatever it is, we'll give you 200.
And then you'll have to decide.
And then we would use it as...
So it may or may not have anything to do with it.
Well, they, well, we would have to do these things, but not all of them, depending on how much money it is.
200 would be the 40%.
No, I mean just 200.
They might just flat give us 200.
In other words, they could take a piece of what we're asking for, that 570, and say, we'll only give you 200,000, you know, and, you know, that, and then we'll reimburse 40% of that.
Yeah, I was just curious why the different priorities, but...
They're actually making up the process along the way.
Uh, yeah.
And a lot of districts were unaware of it.
That's fine.
Yeah. We just have to stay on top of it.
So, so there's not necessarily a rhyme or reason yet, but there may be down there.
We hope so. We certainly hope so.
Okay. Okay, do I have a motion then?
Do we know anything about when the notification process will happen?
I believe it's November 1st they'll notify districts. Well, I guess they need that time to review all the applications. That's our understanding, it'll be November 1st.
So do I have a motion then, anyway?
Motion to approve the request, submission.
Second.
Any questions from anyone? Anyone in the audience? No? Okay, all those in favor? Thank you. Discussion possible vote, appointment of assistant superintendent of schools. Mr. Eric?
Yes, I'm recommending the school committee appoint Mrs. Amy Donblyvo to the position of assistant superintendent of schools.
Could you build just a little bit, I guess we'll make the motion, and then, sorry, go ahead, and second.
Discussion, okay. Thank you.
And I'll second. Just talk to a little bit to why we're doing it, because I have had a few questions.
Right. The reason for this recommendation for myself is, in addition to all the curriculum duties that the curriculum director performs, I believe we need an assistant superintendent to help out with the evaluations of teachers and the evaluation of our programs as an administrator beyond that of a principal. Building principals are very important, but I believe we need another set of objective eyes, in the sense that eyes that aren't in the building, looking at what we're doing. We also need somebody in charge, if, with an educational background, if I'm not available. If I'm at a meeting, conference, you know, last year when I was out injured, you know, we were fortunate we had Mr. Cabral, but I really think for the continuity of the district, for when issues come up that I'm not available for, the pressure doesn't go on to Doug, who's a great financial whiz, but he doesn't have the educational background that Amy has. And I just think it would make for a more contin, a greater continuity for how the district...
And it's not in your position.
No.
I mean, it's slash, it's slash curriculum director.
Right.
You know what I mean?
It's curriculum and instruction.
Yeah.
That's correct.
So it's the same person.
Assistant superintendent for curriculum and instruction.
Right, that's what it said in the contract throughout it, so...
Right, so we've taken an existing position and expanded the responsibilities, and that's why it's a new title.
And the salary, there's, there's no significant increase in the salary.
Yeah, because that's how people, you know, I had the question, it's, oh, you're creating a new position.
Right, a new position.
No, in fact, we're not.
And hiring a new person. It's not.
Well, it is a new position, but I think we're expanding it.
We're adding responsibilities to an existing position.
Yeah. It's not a new, different person, you know?
No, it's not an additional hire.
Right, so that's important, you know, because we wouldn't just do that without posting it and all those different things.
Was there anything in that contract now?
Well, are we going to go into vote on the appointment first, and then we'll vote on the contract?
In the contract, okay. All right, we had a motion and a second.
Okay, so do I have any questions from anyone? No? All those in favor? Okay.
And I'll make a motion to accept the contract.
Second.
And I have a, just a couple amendments or corrections. If we turn to page four of that contract for the assistant superintendent of schools, last line in the second to last paragraph, we don't want to suspend our business manager for, for misbehavior on the part of the assistant superintendent. It's rearing itself.
I'm thinking Amy's good with it.
Fuck the opportunity, just like...
There's a gremlin in the software that's really after you.
Won't give up even the title, we don't need to give up the title.
They're after you, Doc.
So I would replace business manager with assistant superintendent of curriculum and instruction. And then on page five, I would have the agreement run from July 1, 2015 through June 30, 2018.
Okay.
Those are my two amendments or corrections.
Do you need a separate motion?
I will, motion to approve the contract as amended. A second.
Any questions? All those in favor? Okay, thank you.
Yes, we'll take them one by one in case we have any other further corrections. I'll make a motion to accept the director of administrative and finance contract.
Oh, the next one on the agenda is superintendent.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Superintendent, yeah.
Sorry, Bill.
That's okay. Okay, so Deb made that motion, do I have a second?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to accept the superintendent's contract.
Do I have a second?
And correction or amendment I would offer, on page four, we have section G about travel reimbursement, but I think we can delete that since it is covered on page three under A2.
Yes, you're correct.
Okay, so we will delete G on page four. And that's it.
I'll motion, contract as amended.
So, do I have any questions from anyone? No? All those in favor? Okay.
Maybe we should get our...
Should I make the motion as amended?
Do you have any corrections on the next one?
No, actually, that one looks fine.
I'll make a motion to accept the contract.
Second, I'll second that.
And this one is the director of administration and finance?
Yes.
And there's no amendments?
No.
He's not getting suspended?
No.
Okay, any questions from anyone? No? Okay, all those in favor?
And the next one, the administrators' contract, I will make a motion to approve it as presented.
Any questions from anyone? No? All those in favor?
I've got nothing either.
Next one?
Well, we're up to maintenance director.
And technology?
All right, I'm...
Did you find one on maintenance?
I did. So I'll make a motion to approve with the following amendments.
I see one.
Yes, on, under term.
Mm-hmm.
So we want that 2018. And then, when we received the drafts, there was an addendum to this listing responsibilities.
I'll include that with the contract.
The extra, right. Yeah.
Yes.
So then you'll do all that and send those out to us after?
Yeah, I'll include it.
The amendments?
When it's approved, it will go up online.
Yeah.
With the job descriptions.
Job, yeah, job descriptions, yes.
In a second.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Anybody have any questions? All those in favor? Now, next is the technology.
I make a motion to approve with one change on page four. We just need to change that to 22nd. Yep, just the date.
Any questions on the technology one? No? All those in favor?
Thank you, Ms. Herman.
Thank you, Carol, very much.
I just wanted to, again, thank the committee for their approval of all the contracts. We appreciate it.
So you're going to put those online, and then you'll send a copy to Nancy?
We appreciate your efforts to try to bring up ourselves.
Tomorrow you'll send a copy, when he fixes them all, you'll send them to Nancy, because they all have to be in the town hall. Thank you.
We appreciate the work you guys do.
Thank you.
We do. We really do. Everyone, thank you so much. Okay. So now, this G, we did that, now we're on H, residential growth. And the next one are only for discussion only, they're not supposed to be here for voting. So the residential growth, I just wanted to mention that I always go to the planning board to hear about the Brawn Mill and, you know, Sandy Woods and everything that's coming in. And I was there the other night, and I was a little bit alarmed when there was a development, possibly with over 100 houses. It was a cluster of development, maybe 150. And I know Mr. Perry was going to put it on the town council agenda, and Susan Gill's going to put it on the planning board agenda. And we always keep track of it, and they send you things so you can send letters back, but I just wanted to mention it in public so everyone knows, so they can be aware of what, that's all.
Where is it?
That's all it was. It's on the other side of Souza Road.
So that's going to be 100 houses?
Yeah.
Well, there's a proposal that has not been approved.
No, 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 it's just, no, not at all. They just came to talk about it, that's all I'm saying.
Right, it's not in conformance with zoning, current zoning, so...
They have to go through all the different things, of course they do. But I'm just saying, we always do keep our eye on that, as a school department, that's all I wanted to mention. So now we have, did you want to say anything, Mr. Perry?
What I did find out from another counselor and talking to Kate Michaud is that, once we have our comprehensive plan done, and submitted to the state and get it back from the state, we'll have an 18-month, we can put in 18-month moratorium on any kind of building in Tivonin, so that we can fit our zoning into it and our audences into it. So, again, you know, these plans might come along now, and they could get stamped, and we'll have no say in what goes on until we get that moratorium in there. It doesn't look like it's going to happen for at least another six months. So, there's a lot of development that's, that's looking to come to Tivonin, and it's mostly residential.
Any, any talk at the planning board or council level of, like, redoing the zoning, for instance, instead of R40, have R80?
Well, we have to wait until the comprehensive plan is completed.
Is that what it is?
Once it's completed, then we can start going back and fitting it all together.
Oh, so we don't think for, you don't think for six months, huh? Okay.
And I'm just saying, if somebody comes in, they're going to know this.
Right.
So they're going to want this stuff...
Get in before that six month.
Correct.
But once we do that, then we can start...
Then we can start doing it.
Trying to figure out how to slow it.
Correct.
Where it works.
You could put limitations on, you know, half an acre, a quarter acre.
Right.
We're not, we're not the only town looking at this. If you watch Middletown, they're doing the same thing we are.
Yeah, I saw that.
They're going over their, their zoning, and they want to stop the residential and commercial in Middletown, actually. So, it's something we really got to keep our eyes, our eyes open. You know, 194 houses, if we take the state average of 1.67 child per house, that's going to be 600 kids going into your school system. I don't think we have the space for it. So...
Okay. Thank you, Dave. Thank you, Dave, for coming. Now, we have summer and future opportunities, Linda Lawson.
So for all those kids we're going to get?
We do welcome the children.
Often, we talk about programs that we have in the school and partnerships that we make, but in talking with Mrs. Black, we certainly do a lot during the day, but there's also a lot that happens in the summer as well. So, this is the undersea technology apprenticeship program, so the UTAP program that seven of our students participated in that you were aware of. So in one of the photos, you happen to see that they're in a lecture with Dr. Somalis, which was the director of the underwater warfare center, who has since retired. And, you know, it's kind of dark, but that happens to be the students in the test tank outside of NAVC. So we talk about UTAP a lot, so I did bring a prop with me today. So this is what the students build. So the students work in teams, and it fosters communication, critical thinking, teamwork. They really have to kind of look through what they need, all of this as parts. They have to assemble, they have to wire, they have to harness, they have to solder. They do have a controller here, they have to work on buoyancy. So there's a lot that goes into it. The students also get to interact with a number of different professionals at the war college, and they also get to go to the test tank to do some sort of an Olympics. Unfortunately, we, we weren't allowed to take photos in the test tank, but they do compete against other teams. So we talk about UTAP and the opportunity in the three weeks that the students are there, but it's really jammed packed with career exploration, interaction, and all of those other things, but also reinforcing the science and engineering principles as well. So if anyone wants to, we have to put in a pool now to...
Yeah, I was just saying, you don't have a little kiddie pool with you.
Underwater, over.
Add that to the facilities.
That's what we're going to get.
Yeah, add that on, well, if you're going to ask for 7 million, just ask for 7.3. Our finance director suspended us for more.
Put that on.
The students, also, these are two students that entered into summer internship program over at Raytheon this summer. So they had, and unfortunately, we can't take photos at Raytheon either, that's why they're, they're outside here, they were more than happy to pose for the picture for me. So they had an incredible experience while they were over there this summer. They went through a number of different interactions with the professionals over there in all of the different departments, and they ran through a rocketry program. So at the end of their internship, they did get to fire the rocket out back. So that was the, that was the goal of the, of the internship program there, and it just so happens Michael's rocket won, so not that it was competition, but I was informed that, I had to say that today. We did also have some students attend the University of Rhode Island Construction Academy, again, exploring opportunities in construction. The academy also gives them OSHA 10 certification, as well as a flagger certification, so they do come out with work credentials at the end of the academy. They worked with the Rhode Island Department of Transportation. They got to go out on the Viaduct's construction site out there in Providence. They went to the materials handling, materials handling and testing area at Rideau. They went out to Cardi Corp and worked with the asphalt plant and the engineers out there and the chemical engineers, as far as even the mixture of asphalt and how they make asphalt and the chemical compounds with asphalt. And believe it or not, they actually research and test quiet asphalt, so when our cars and our tires run over it, it's, it doesn't make a lot of noise. So, so that was a great opportunity for a few of our students. We did have one student attend the engineering academy at University of Rhode Island. He happens to be wiring a, doing a little electrical engineering here and wiring one of the lights. But the engineering academy focuses on all the different disciplines within engineering, so they do some geotechnical engineering, they look at bridges, they look at electrical, they look at mechanical, so it's, it's a nice exposure to all the different engineering disciplines. We also had two students attend the maritime free supply chain engineering academy over at URI, and you can see our students here, they're out on one of the ships down at Quanset as a cargo ship is coming in. In the top right, that's some of our students at the maritime simulation test center over in Middletown. So they're actually sitting in a really big video game, but they're driving a large ship in many different types of weather conditions, and they're actually seeing how cargo flows. And the bottom happens to be NORAD down at Quanset where all the cars come off the container ship. So they actually got to see some sports or celebrities, Lamborghini, that's orange, that happened to be delivered on special order that day. So that was the, the highlight of everything else they, they saw, the orange Lamborghini for some celebrity.
That was for me. It was in the fine print, that kind of...
We had a couple of our students, when Electric Boat was here last year, and we did go out and visit Electric Boat, and we came back and they did their profiles online. We had a couple of students really interested in, in a career, in a career pathway after they leave here with Electric Boat. So we were able to set up two students through an exploration and welding with General Dynamics and Electric Boat. We've also been able to place these two students in jobs this summer, Maritime Solutions down in Middletown, where they're going to continue with on-the-job training in welding, and it will position them very nicely when they graduate for a career at Electric Boat, and that's their, the path that they've chosen. So they're kind of going through some, some welding training here. As an outcome from the UTAP program for our students, we had two students that were identified, two Tivonin students, that have been asked to be on the team when they go out the following year to select students and do a presentation from, from their viewpoint. We also had three students that were identified as student ambassadors to attend Defense Innovation Days. So Defense Innovation Days, and I'll just kind of hand out, sorry, I'm going to drop this off sooner. Is the Defense Innovation, is the Defense Conference in Newport that's held annually. So they happened to be in the crowd of people here, listening to a panel discussion on unmanned vehicles. So unmanned vehicles really mirrored and mapped nicely to the work that they did in the UTAP program. So they were invited to, to attend and partake in that, that session with 350 professionals from the defense industry from all over the country. Here's some of our students talking with the Newark engineers, and again, very similar to the construction and design and engineering that went into their sea perch, obviously on a much bigger, bigger level, so. They're working with Wright Solutions, so they did get to interact with vendors and exhibitors. And out of this also, one of the students formed a little bit of a relationship with McLaughlin Research Corp, and that student is now doing their senior project with McLaughlin Research, and they will be three D-printing and building a drone, a four quad drone. So that will be the student's senior project as it comes, so, so we take...
I want to be on that one.
The student will not be flying the drone, we will just be exhibiting the engineering design, and Mr. Eric is smiling now. So we won't be flying the drone, but we'll, he'll certainly have, have a lot to show at, at the end of it all. And that's it, so that's just some of the examples. The Defense Innovation Days, if you have a chance to look through it, you can see the quality of the presenters and folks that were in attendance. They did have an opportunity to interact with Congressman Landraven as well. So I was, just wasn't really quick enough with my photo, my camera, to snap that, so, but, but it was, it was a great summer for, for many of the students.
Thank you, Linda. Thank you, Linda. Any questions about that from anyone? Comments?
I have one question, actually.
Sure.
Is it limited to, like, how far it can go?
I'm sorry?
To some of these facilities, is there like a travel limit?
Is there a travel limit for...
The program.
For the program?
As soon to be incorporated with the company or your, like, or college or whatever.
Um, no, I mean, it's, it's really on a, I mean, we can set up anything. You're talking about one of our students working with a particular company, and we're only within like a 15-mile radius.
Okay.
I mean, we, we do also look at other companies as well, so if there's something that a student does have transportation, and we can set them up with a mentor or a job shadow opportunity, and as long as they can make arrangements to get there, we will, we'll be happy to coordinate that if anyone is interested.
Your company wants to volunteer?
Well, they, we have co-ops, but we have a research campus in Gloucester, which is the world leader in engineering fire prevention and fire science and risk management, so this could possibly be used, but it's in Gloucester, should patch it.
We, we do have students, we've had students in the past that have interest in attending the engineering program over, a summer program at UConn. Some of these students will travel distances if, but so, if there's an opportunity that anyone is aware of, just let us know, and we'll put that out to our students. Often, we'll get a student that'll come by and say, hey, do you know anybody that, you know, is in physical therapy or chemical engineering or, so it's really, I mean, it's, it's certainly possible. We don't limit, you know, limitations in terms of travel or distance, that's for sure.
Okay.
That'd be good, Jim. Thank you. Thanks, Linda. Thank you. Discussion possible voter on a home teaching request?
Yes, you have a homeschooling request, and I'm recommending approval for it.
I'll make a motion to approve the homeschooling request. Second.
Actually, I've got a couple on, I believe, no, it's the same family.
Is that it?
No, they're all the same one, aren't they?
Yeah, they're all the same.
Yes.
Or no?
Any questions?
Oh, no, there's different.
No, there's two different ones.
There's two.
They're both from Ranger. They're both from Ranger.
No, same family, though.
So should we do them separately?
No, you can just take them.
No, they're all Mr. Cabral.
Okay, all those in favor? Okay. Reports or announcements? Does anyone have any?
We've just, we concluded open house. Cass had theirs last night. All five were well-attended. Again, I think this is the second or third year in a row where we've done them on separate nights, and it seems to be popular with our parents.
Anyone else?
I just want to say that we all know No Child Left Behind was going to be reauthorized, and they've been debating it and sending it back and forth, and it's finally going to come up.